That way I can hand that over to Barbara, she can verify that those individuals in the ward that live in that ward and who they would be replacing, just to verify. Like a quick check that we don't have a real people that are willing to seek that that appointment and they don't qualify. Because you remember, we have a ward system and you have to live within that ward in order to to run. We don't have an at-large ward system. So, you know, hopefully one day we can change some of that, but right now we'd like to look at that. So that's why we're going down with the contact.
As well as city, since we just also Jennifer has mentioned any board.
And for a week or so, anybody that would like to volunteer and and perhaps submit an application or basically a sort of resume, not an application, but a resume, an overview, where do you live again, those things that I just talked about, so that we can gather all of that. And with that, I'll kind of put it all together, but what I'd like to do is for each one of us, we would have a panel interview with each participant to see basically.
And I was and I was gonna ask Dustin the legality of this, ultimately it's a mayor appointment with a council comprio, is that correct?
Yeah, it's just a not well, anybody can nominate a person.
Sure.
You can nominate second. The position, both positions are up for election this year.
That's right, and that's why I'm.
So this, they would just finish out or twenty twenty four term until August.
And that's why I'm so my point, finish out the this this term.
True.
And then coming up in November or whatever election.
The term actually goes through December.
That's right.
But they would need to roll it further.
That's right.
For the relationship.
That's right.
Continue.
And we will, we will make that quite known, just because they're appointed and voted on accepted, they still have to run in November or probably November.
File their office, yes.
Yeah, to make sure that everybody understands that, that they're not being appointed for this term and in the next two years. So, uh, but what I'd like to do is have a panel discussion with each one.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, that's what we were hoping to do. A short bit, sweet.
Sure.
That's why we want, we want the written documentation first, so that we 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 have a basis for all of the conversation. Uh, I don't foresee that going, you know, very long.
But I think it's important to get the test, is it's not necessarily before Jennifer had served for quite a while in her.
Right.
Position, but the other person's been a bit of a revolving door this year, you think that's usually gonna happen, so.
Well, and.
Stay in your business.
Well, and that's exactly right. Uh, you know, before, we only met just for this, this council, then we said we got, we don't have enough time, so then we went elected to have what we call, they said we can have some workshop where we take everything that's on the agenda and we talk at length on that. Most of the time, and this is what has been acknowledged to whoever, most of the time, we're here roughly two to three hours on that city council workshop discussing each. Um, and I really appreciate that. That just goes to show the, the dedication you have to have for this guy. So anyway, we'll, we'll get all of that information out, I'll get an email out and then send it to everybody that has submitted, uh, interest and then at the workshop, our next scheduled workshop, we'll have that scheduled for the week discussing, you know, with each one of these guys. All right, any other discussion on that? Thank you. The next on the agenda is the twenty twenty three legislative audit. Crystal is not here.
Do we need a resolution, just stating that we received that or is it just a mark stating we've received the copy of?
It just has to be recorded in the minutes that that he died in and that he was.
Let me say, right, there were no infractions on that by those financials?
No, it was not good. Uh, it was quite refreshing to be sitting in the audit. Uh, Crystal, the legislative auditor, and basically he said, I had nothing to to tell except that everything was, uh, well done. And I'm sorry if Crystal's not here behind the curtain, I wanted to thank her in front of everyone, uh, how much she really does for us and to have a no infractions whatsoever on the legislative audit, that speaks well for her and we do appreciate that. And we'll recognize her at a later date, she had some family issues and wasn't able to be with us tonight, so we'd get and thank her for all of the commitment and keeping all of the money straight. So that's, that's a good thing. Okay, and now that's the last thing on the general agenda, selling and purchasing of the fire truck, chief, fire chief asking for a lot of, chief.
Really? I've got two trucks I'm asking permission to sell tonight. Uh, the first one is a nineteen eighty seven Ford F three fifty. I'd like to hear, me and Dustin had a conversation on earlier about how to go about it, but uh, we've just had a few issues out of the truck. Uh, we're growing, a Paulway grow, and we're trying to stay ahead of the curve ball. And we feel the time to upgrade, uh, for a better service truck, better registered truck. Side of that, we located a nineteen ninety six Ford Super Duty Mini Pumper. It's a super duty mint condition, crewed down, sixteen thousand miles on it, uh, three hundred gallons of water, the whole nine yards, compartment space, store. It would benefit us well. Uh, it's located in City Shannon Hills. They're getting rid of it because they don't have a need for it. Uh, they're currently asking twenty nine thousand dollars for it. But this truck would let us phase out the truck, so you can put one back in, that can fill the role we currently have.
You said that the ninety ninety six Mini Pumper?
Yes.
Is that F three fifty?
It's a Super Duty, so I'm looking at the Ford fifty.
Okay.
Sixteen thousand miles, crewed down. Uh, it's actually bigger than that eighty seven we have. It's got a little bit more storage space in it and kind of with a whole list of equipment that they're providing as well.
Talk about the maintenance on that, you said that they have just about all the maintenance records?
Yes, they have, it's been a point on our, uh, city bond, uh, years ago. They've taken good care of it. I mean, for that truck to be, it's aged a little mileage, I mean, the load it's seen and it don't even have tires. I mean, it's in mint condition.
Also explain how you use that vehicle in lieu of one of our ward.
So with the storage and the water capabilities on it, we can actually put extrication on it and take our set off the lighter truck we currently have and put it on this truck and reduce the wear and tear off of our bigger apparatus, as we all know, it's super expensive. It's easier to replace our smaller rigs, then have to drop over half a million dollars on a bigger truck. We can save our maintenance costs, um, they don't take near the maintenance that a bigger truck would pay, uh, but we take care of, we can make a nice period on the road, or just trying to stay ahead of the curve ball. Uh, just a little food for thought, uh, as of right now, we've done seven calls today. We're sitting around almost three hundred and seven calls this year. Uh, our projected, we're already bigger than we were last year. So just wanted to let y'all know that.
Actually, you speak for a moment on the truck you were talking about.
So we have a nineteen ninety six F eight hundred engine. Things like a cockroach, you can't kill it. But the problem is, it doesn't have the storage capacity for how we operate now. Engine one, we carry all of our equipment on one truck, so we can let the trucks that have to take to the sink in one truck and just operate with every one of them. This truck doesn't allow us that capability. The departments are super small, it just doesn't all have the personnel to work on. Computers too many, you have, it's a great truck, but our needs are growing and if we can sell it to another department, we have one in the county that's actually in need that would like to purchase it, um, for thirty thousand, we kind of priced it, and thirty thousand is a good place for the centerfield fire department in northern Fall County. They covered fully below, we get you down, they'd like to purchase the truck. I talked to Dustin earlier, with them being another, another governmental agency, uh, we do not have to give a shit with that, since if we own, we own a governmental agency.
Financially, we spend it.
Yes, sir. We're not spending in our budget. That eighty seven, I'm actually currently talking with City Shannon Hills, I mentioned that earlier. They're talking possibly about purchasing the eighty seven brush truck, somewhere that would actually knock ten thousand dollars off the price, that would put us at nineteen thousand, um, and that would leave us eleven thousand dollars that we can purchase a pickup truck with, uh, to kind of fill it in on certain tables. But, I mean, we're, we're doing good now, our fleet's stalled and we just want to keep here on it, and this is a good way, not have to get in our budget, but we can either win it or lose it.
So actually, let, let me ask some, some nonparticular questions.
Go.
Like, heads and tails of it.
Yes.
Someone, uh, wonder about the ninety six mini pumper?
Yes.
It's gonna meet some needs that you're currently doesn't have. Uh, potentially getting rid of, um, a ninety six model.
F eight hundred.
F eight hundred.
Full.
That doesn't have the storage, not being utilized right now very much at all.
It's. There's all of them.
Okay. Um, would, and not know anything, so will that ninety six mini pumper you're looking to purchase, it will fill the need of that truck?
Yes.
Plus some?
Plus some. Uh, as y'all know, we have the two thousand and ten F four fifty, F three fifty that's over at our central station. We've, since we added, uh, Mr. Ed actually made a family truck, and when we purchased it, the truck had lower miles and we had a grand haul, uh, and it's over a hundred and twelve thousand miles currently. And we'd like to get this new truck with lower miles, sixteen thousand, trying to preserve the life of some of our trucks to let it come, move our central station, let us start taking some runs and we can rotate them, uh, because we have some, we just want to keep our fleet in nice shape.
So you also, you also mentioned liquidating the eighty seven brush truck.
Yes.
And I know that deal has a good truck, essentially with Shannon Hills.
Yes, sir.
Is that truck currently being utilized?
It's currently in the shop. We've had some issues with it. Uh, it's apparently got a old leak and had a starting issue. It's probably in the shop, maybe wrapping up on it. Uh, last month or the month before, um, I believe I actually brought that to y'all. We had to have new plugs put in and new fuel injectors, I mean, it has a whole.
Ten thousand dollars price tag.
The, I mean, the whole motor, the whole truck has been, we've done it basically. We put new batteries in it, it's getting new cables, I mean, it's in only top shape from the back, but, uh, it is just not fair, I mean, currently, and with this truck, we can fit our equal size.
So and that, and that would be my next question, would this ninety six mini pumper that you're projecting, would that take the place of the eighty seven brush truck as well for those applications?
Given that, uh, dependent.
I don't have any questions.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. No, go ahead.
I wanted something next to basic equipment, it's always different types of equipment, every one of them do a specific thing where you can do other stuff, but.
True.
Same thing with the fire truck, all these apparatus, they do one specific thing remove, okay? A brush truck is simply that you need to get them off the road, you need to go out of power line, you need to cut a fire off. It's my belief, and I know you're not, I know you're with the program, I, 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 but I just want to make this everybody aware, in case you're not, we've got businesses coming. Our fire personnel or our fire truck situation is gonna change. I would rather get ahead of the curve than be behind the ball, because if we don't, we're gonna need bigger equipment. I applaud you for what you're doing. Or squad, whatever you call it, do.
Try it out.
Be the best you can, but we.
I'm trying to be good at the fact.
We're really gonna have to start looking at some, you know, in the future, some, some new equipment that, you know, that's gonna, because that, that's gonna stack on top of it, you don't, if you, you end up having to do a bunch of it at once, it's gonna hurt. If we, if we start making those steps now, and that's why I'm, I'm very thankful that you're, uh, that you're being proactive on this, because it'll save us a lot of money in the future.
Let me get to the heart of my point, I, it actually is dumb questions.
No, you're.
I was just trying to decide if we made, if we needed to do a resolution or to, to authorize the sale of the ninety six and the purchase of the ninety six.
Yes.
But if we needed to go ahead and go with the eighty seven on as well, if that was on the table? If we needed to get rid of that truck, if we had something to fill the role of that truck, if we were looking to replace that truck?
We are.
To find out what the.
We, we're not looking for a pickup truck, we actually have one currently in our fleet, uh, it serves as a staff vehicle currently, it's actually a report gun. It's gotta have the weight in it and put the seat back in it. We thought maybe Rick Parkinson, that did on fifth, we tried a different route, but it is the one to put back in it.
Would that truck serve the purpose of what you're talking about?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And we've, we've been constantly finding it, so our officers have been very about, what's in their opinion, trying to figure out everybody, what's our best. Possibly, that way this truck out of here that sits in the station, it can take breaks. I mean, we're running harder than they're, and that way we can let it be a brush truck. Like it was originally, we're a medical free brush truck, well now it can back up to our current fleet, did things bring, and we're running our trucks for it.
Uh, let's get back to here.
Yeah, my question is, do we need three separate resolutions?
An ordinance, the way you said, you require an ordinance, I can add it right to the next one.
Give a thumbs up, we've got the approval so far, but we need to document everything.
And like I said, we don't know yet on if, if it's gonna go to them or if we, we can just, if it does go to our government, if we put it up, then we can go deals, we've done it before, previous public man.
Would you feel that, that the other fire station will wait for another month? Work, that's what I'm asking. Are we going to approve or put up, go forward with a motion second to approve a purchase up to a certain point? What were, what were you talking about Dustin, that you would have to have other ordinance?
It says, it says shall be approved by ordinance of the government, so we, we couldn't have enough time to get, enough time today.
But basically, we all are, it's simple, can I vote to cut the deal and then we vote on the next meeting?
That's what I'm, I was asking.
We just wanna be good with the audit.
Yeah.
Oh, I suppose it was.
Does that fulfill your question?
Yes, sir.
Are we talking about questions, Scott?
I, I know, I mean, I was just trying to.
She's giving you a chance.
Go ahead. So, so you mentioned, uh, the ninety six, the place, um, but.
Yes, yes, sir. So.
Yes, sir.
So, rough estimate, so on an engine, when we get a PM done, prevent maintenance, we'll check filters, the whole nine hours roughly, five hundred dollars, just on big trucks. That doesn't include if we blow the tire out, I mean, that's almost a thousand dollars for one tire. I don't know. I've blown out two on one truck. I mean, we, they're tired about expensive. So we can keep the wear and tear on the big ones, keep it on littler trucks, I mean, you're looking at two hundred dollars usually roughly, if nothing major, having them on small trucks to keep them up and constantly running, little chain services. We service them every four thousand, five thousand miles on our small careers, just to keep them stable.
How can we get to form the AMR market?
We try and push that out a little more, because they're diesel motors and, uh, yearly is what we try for, but if we go to running on farm, we'll try and do two a year, but usually it's one a year along with our pump tests that we have to do yearly as well. Usually yearly service, but wear and tear, close park, and how often they're.
That ninety six is a root, look here.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
So we, I'm sure we got the money, the budget, the story in, approved, conscious, and then might as well sell up the other trucks.
We, yeah, subject to official ordinance approval. Yeah, John Looson.
And as far as, once I figure out with them, what all basically, I'm actually.
Thank you.
I guess.
Appreciate y'all, thank you.
Okay, with that, how do we work making a motion to?
I make a, Dustin, fill me in here, I make, I'll make a motion to authorize the fire chief to move forward with the negotiation and the purchase of the ninety six model Mini Pumper, the price of twenty nine thousand.
Your second. We have a, a motion and a second. Before we take a vote, is that what we need to be voting on, or do we need to add to that motion and second, the other portion of the.
The sale of the other.
Is to, if you're releasing it to, to the right.
Now, does that need to be a separate motion? Since it's a separate deal.
Okay, so we have a.
I made a motion of the purchase of the ninety six.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor, all in favor of that motion with the purchase of the new nineteen ninety six F three fifty, please indicate by a seven nine. All opposed, thumbs up. Thank you. Now, why do I have a second?
I made a motion to authorize the sale of the nineteen ninety six F eight hundred, uh, for the price of thirty thousand dollars to Centralville Fire Department. We'll be specific to that. Don't put the here.
Any center server.
Can we just, can we just state it in any different, in terms of specific?
Yes, because let's do that, because what is something, I'd rather not have it said again.
Just look in there in my motion, yes, please. I made a motion to approve the sale of the ninety six model F eight hundred fire truck, uh, to a, to a sister government agency for the price of thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you, your second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of this motion and second, please indicate by a seven nine.
All right.
All opposed, thumbs up. Thank you. And Doctor Street, thank you for your diligence and trying to continue to strengthen our, our fire department fleet, thank you. All right, that concludes our general categories, remove the old business, this is the end of business. Without any old business, remove the general comments from, from the podium. Do we have any general comments on the podium? Sorry? Yes, yes, please come up to the podium. Okay.
Get on with your channel.
One, one, one second, please state your name.
Markieba Jackson.
Ms. Jackson? Yes, okay, and you have both three names.
Okay. Last year, April, May, I had asked the water company, I have a building, it's on sixty eight, I asked the water company, what I needed to establish water. So that was last year, and here it is now. Um, they told me I would pay all the fees and everything to get the water established and had some trouble, and because I didn't have water there, and so the state shut up, put us off our work. So I've got that satisfied, and so now I still need water, I can report on insurance purposes, and so I get a structure system and get it. I was told that last year was not a tick, and a year before I could get water, because we didn't have staff and we didn't have the funds for the water. Well, Ford Smarts come and help me to get water established, and now he said, he talked to Mr. Breton, and he said it was gonna take yet another year before I could get water there. So I listened to him, I called, um, the department, uh, to see if I could get the grant, since they didn't have the funds for it, and I talked to Susan Stack, so I had the authorization, she said that I have to do like the mayor or the engineer a job to do that with you. So I'm trying to come up with what it is that I need to do to beat that down. Also, Alex also said that he had an underground utility company, but he still can't get the permit, the phone, for water, so I'm, I'm, I don't know.
Okay, uh, without going into, thank you for coming. Uh, what I would recommend is that, uh, as I understand it, this has been a long drawn out process, and, uh, we can't solve that tonight. What I would suggest is that we, you, you contact Barbara and let's set up a meeting here, and we'll have all of the, the right people in here, and let's sit down and let's talk about your situation, and let's find out all, all the facts, put all the facts on the table, and find out what exactly is the requirement or requirements that must be met for us to provide water. And, and that way we, we all have clear understanding of what the situation is and how we can go forward.
Cause also, you know, I said I called, find out if there was funding that I could get, so, um, whatever it is that I can do to help.
Okay. Well, I, maybe also, again, there, I know there's a lot of requirements in, in commercial type establishments, and so let's just make sure that we have all the facts and then we, we get a game plan, so that everybody understands what is required and, and, and whose, whose responsibility it is. And then we'd be glad to go, to go through that with you, okay? So we can all have something in mind and we can, we can help you with a, a timeline, so to say that's the white call.
Cause I can't, I mean, it was, it's the, it's gonna be a year, and then over a year, and it's gonna be a year.
Well.
It's like, why is it taking years?
Yes, and, and that's, as we develop that plan and we find out what is the require, are the requirements, then we can put time limits on that, that sort of thing, and help, help both, both sides will understand more clearly when we're talking about all this, we start things where we aren't, and we walk all the way through what your, what your need is and how, how, what needs to be done in order to meet those needs, okay?
Right, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Before you leave, if you would, uh, see Barbara to give her all your information, contact information. Thank you so much. All right, uh, any other comments from public? If not.
I do.
Oh. You're not public. What's it, Ryan?
RJCD factory. Had a little, when you just get out. Normally, it's a old, they call it, it's a big, um, care. And I see you were wasting cost, you know, they put a ramp on what's there for a run, so, and then tell me that orange and blue. That's, if you, it's kind of a hybrid, and we just get out. I had ducked a big run, uh, with it, but I had ducked two, or I don't understand, I don't know, I'm pretty new for a bit of scene, never been seen. I had ducked two blocks so far, um, unfortunately I didn't get a little time, we would give them the agenda here, I saw that we were there, you know, that's coming up, possibly in a workshop, where we'll be set up, we'll be, uh.
Okay.
Outside of that, uh, do you have anything else, uh, like it? And we can have a special meeting, uh, workshop meeting, uh, if you give a timeline to figure it out, and that, so we get together on that and get that.
Let's turn that quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any other? All right, any other public comments? All right, but not, um, under the next agenda item, with the, uh, announcements, our next, excuse me, our next regular council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April the twenty-third. I'm sorry, that's not, that was the previous meeting, I'm sorry, uh, that would be May the twenty-eighth. Then our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May the fourteenth, at seven P M. Our next council workshop meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May the ninth. And the workshop meeting always begins at six P M, rather than seven. With that, do I hear a motion for a gentleman?
I can motion a juror. Sir.
Thank you.